All right, so good evening, welcome everyone. I'm going to call this meeting to order. I'll lead it if you will first join us in the pledge of allegiance in moment of silence.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. First up, we have consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Shanae, second?
I'll second.
Teresa?
All but approved.
Okay, all right, financial report.
Okay, we ended April with a fund balance of 5.8 million in the general fund. And you'll notice that we have received part of our impact aid funds on your financial report.
Can we repeat that number?
Five, you want the exact?
No, I just can't, I don't know my mics on.
Hello? No, it's not. 5.8 million in the general fund.
Okay.
And with 83% of our fiscal year complete, we ended with expenditures of 80% of our budgeted funds and have received 90% of our revenue. And our April's, April's loss received was 81,000, up from 68 in March.
Yay. Good news.
And we ended the month with a fund balance of 2.3 million.
Good idea. Thank you. Thank you. What is this, the Esser review?
Mm-hmm.
Is that why you say it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, the Esser review? So make sure. Hello.
So I get to report on the Esser grant. Every so often, the state likes us to come in and update the board and the community on the, on where we're at with our Esser grant. I think we often wonder when the federal government starts sending out lots of money, whether it's actually being used to any great degree. I'm happy to say that I'm very pleased with the way that our grant has come to a close. We're not quite there. We probably got nine to 12 months with a little bit of funding left. But looking back, and I had nothing to do with this, lots of other people other than me, I'm happy to report where we are. So a good bit of the money was spent in, on the front end of COVID with enhanced custodial services, with buses to provide better equipment, more spacing for our students. We led into curriculum, a new curriculum project, I want to say two years ago, that included a new curriculum, materials and supplies for that, and also some in-depth professional development to support our teachers in implementing that program. We input academic coaching at both schools to be able to target the specific needs of students, analyze the data and that kind of thing. We have been able to add some additional instructional positions where those were needed. On the front end, we also expanded with classroom technology during the time when there was so much instruction being managed online, and that's continued to be the case. We also were able to provide some support for the system for the debt service on our energy renovation project that was put in place a few years ago. So that kind of helps the long term. And then moving forward, the other thing that we did was able to provide a social worker for our system to kind of help with the social and counseling benefits and needs that are there for our students at this time. And then some of the things that we're continuing to do is provide the summer learning activities. Some of those will be more focused based on the data that's being analyzed now. And then we'll also provide for both elementary school and middle school the STEAM camps for this summer. So that's kind of where we are for our Esser program. So I think that's fairly comprehensive for those who put all that together. I think you should be excited about where we are with that. Any questions? Is there any?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we move to our information section, superintendent's report.
Good evening, welcome everyone. We are so excited to see you, especially as we are working toward these last 12 days of school. I know everyone has been working hard and they're tired, but we've just got a little bit left to finish out and finish strong. In our superintendent's report, I just want to keep the board aware of what we're doing this summer. To begin with, it's our summer professional learning. And each school received support through a scholarship to continue what we started last year with our Georgia Leadership and School Improvement Coaching and Training. So we're excited about continuing that. The teams from each school will participate in GLC June 12th through the 16th. Our teacher leaders will also continue participating in the professional learning communities coaching so that they can make those PLCs at their schools strong and database. And that will be in Atlanta during July. So that will be our summer professional learning for our staff. This week is National Teacher Appreciation Week. We're very excited that we actually celebrated last week. Each day, the employees had snacks and surprises and lunches or breakfasts. But we want to make sure that we take today and just recognize all of our employees because they are strong educators and they help us reach our students and create the students that we want. So if you would join me in a round of applause for our educators, our staff, we appreciate all that you do. As Lori had mentioned in Summer STEM, the registration for elementary school and middle school is still open. Remember that our current fifth graders would be able to participate in the middle school Summer STEM, and that is June 5th through the 8th for elementary and middle. Meals will be provided and transportation is provided. So we're excited about that Summer STEM opportunity. And this year, we are very excited to discuss what we're doing to target students who need some additional support. We know how important literacy is to be a strong reader. And our students who may have a few struggles, we are utilizing the data that the elementary school teachers are collecting and targeting those students who need additional support. And they're going to have a reading program, a reading camp this summer. But most importantly, we're not just going to be tutoring kids and working on reading. Our local Family Connections has partnered with us so that we can partner with those families. So our families whose students may need this extra support, we're going to work with those families. We're going to show them some of the strategies that we're doing, carrying it over into the homes so that parents and schools can be a strong partnership and we can see our students excel. So we're very excited about that partnership. And students who are invited to that, Ms. Hurd and Ms. Jones and Ms. Harris are working with those families individually. So we appreciate the work with Family Connections and our elementary school. We do have an end of the school year calendar that is in eBoard, and the public is welcome to see that as well. It just includes all of our end of the year activities, whether that be preschool graduation, kindergarten graduation, field days, award banquets, and then of course, our culminating event, which is high school graduation, which is going to be at our stadium Friday, May 26th, and it begins at 8 o'clock in the evening. So we are excited to watch our students work toward that end goal. Moving into the next item on the superintendent's report, I know that our board is aware, but I want to make sure our public is aware. We have not shared this out in social media as of yet. I wanted to make sure we had the opportunity to do it publicly in our board meeting. But the Georgia School Board Association, each year evaluates school systems and governance teams, and they look at application statuses, and they make recommendations for who they believe are the most effective teams reaching the pinnacles of high governance. And there's an application process, and it's available to all 181 school systems in Georgia. Last week, we found out the good news that the Georgia School Board Association has picked eight finalists in the state of Georgia. And Chattahoochee County is a finalist for the state of Georgia, Georgia School Board Association Governance Team of the Year. So our, our board will be interviewed by members of an outside committee. They will be evaluated on governance structures. All of this will happen in August and September. And a announcement of the winners, there will be three, that will happen in December. And it will be a small school system, a medium-sized school system, and a large school system. So we're so excited about you being recognized for your leadership and partnership from the community and the school system. Congratulations. And none of this happens without our excellent staff. And so it gives me great honor to have our principals come up this evening. And we are going to take a few minutes tonight and recognize some of those folks who made this happen. And these are our retirees. And these are our individuals who have given many years of their life to serve our community and our children and help them grow to be productive contributors of society. So Ms. Hurd and Mr. Kemp, we are going to invite you to the podium.
Good evening. It gives me great pleasure to stand before you to recognize this particular staff member. Ms. Dee Walker has been a staple at the Chattahoochee County Education Center. And you know this because when I asked her, "Ms. Dee, how long have you worked for the district?" And she was like, "Well, um, I don't know. I started here, I started there." The bottom line is, is that she has been a staple in various capacities at our school, working in different positions. For the past few years, she's served as our art paraprofessional, and she's done such an outstanding job with our students. She has been a devoted staff member, serving in all kinds of capacities to support the growth and development of our students. In the past few years, as I said, she's continued as our art paraprofessional, and her love and passion for art has shined through in all the different lessons that she plans and implements with our students. She enjoys being our art paraprofessional. We wish her well in her retirement. Very sad to see you go because a gem like Ms. Dee is truly hard to find. So on behalf of Chattahoochee County School District and the staff at the Education Center, we thank you, Ms. Dee, and applaud you for years well-served and retirement well-deserved. So congratulations.
No, she saw it.
And you have to say some words. No, I'm just teasing. You didn't hear that part. I said, "Now you have to say some words."
Oh, no, no, no. I don't trust myself, I'm going to go home and cry.
But thank you, Ms. Dee. We truly appreciate all that you've done. And I know you're going to be truly missed.
Oh, thank you. I know.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Diane Miller, I don't believe she made it tonight. But she is retiring this year, and she's going to be greatly missed. Next person I'd like to talk about is, he's been here almost since the school opened. And I'd hate to even say how many years he's been teaching total, but I'm pretty sure it's 43, is that right? It's on up there. Mr. Michael Bracken. A lot to say about Mr. Bracken is, he's, over the years, from when I was a teacher and a coach and then an administrator, I could always count on Mr. Bracken to give me good, sound advice, even in the heart of the storm. You know, when everything else seems to be going a little berserk, Mr. Bracken always had wise words. And he was also a heck of an athlete. First time I went golfing with him, I could not believe how far he could hit a golf ball. He's also an expert fisherman. He's pretty good at algebra, too. But anyway, Mr. Bracken, it's been an honor to work with you and to call you a friend. I really cherish our friendship and the time we've been together. So y'all give a warm round of applause for Mr. Michael Bracken. All right, next, I'd like to honor Ms. Kat. Ms. Kat has been working at Chattahoochee County School System for 30 years. The last 30 years, right? It's incredible. I was in middle school when she started working here. She is just the epitome of humility and grace. She comes to work every day, never complains, always, always has a kind word. She's the kind of person that makes you want to work harder, and she makes me want to be a better person. Because no matter what she's asked to do, she does it with a smile and a kind demeanor. And I really appreciate it. Mr. Roy, would you like to say a few words?
Well, y'all know Ms. Kat longer than me. I've only known her for like the last four years. But everything Mr. Kemp said is so true. Anything I can ask her, she'll be there to get it done, no matter what. Now, on that complaining side, she don't complain to them, but she'll come to me, "Well, Mr. Roy, I wasn't going to say nothing, but..." "Now, this just ain't right." But anyway, I'm going to hate to see Ms. Kat go, you know, when she told me the other week that she's going to be retiring. I'm like, "Uh-uh, no. Now I got to find somebody to replace." My staff, it's hard to replace any of them. Ms. Kat is definitely one of them. Being the only female on staff here with the, with the company, we just thank you, Ms. Kat, for what you have done for KBS and for the team. Congratulations on your retirement.
Ms. Kat, I'd like to say it's good that somebody's keeping Rory on his toes.
Amen.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kat. Thank you. And thank you for all of our team who's come out to support their colleagues and giving them their well wishes. And we can't let tonight go unnoticed that Mr. Jefferson is here to support his colleagues, looking so professional and amazing. Is she here? We had an additional retiree enter at the last moment. I think Ms. Sandy Jones is here.
I'm hiding.
We just love to be flexible, and you know, we take people at their word when they're like, "I'm hiding from y'all, I'm not coming."
And I can't say enough about Ms. Sandy Jones. She served as our cafeteria manager, I know, as long as I've been at the Education Center. And I think there was a short period of time where she left, but came right back. Because what I can say about Chatco is that it's always home. But Ms. Sandy does her job well, does it with a smile, makes sure that our students are fed for breakfast and for lunch. And that's not an easy task. We appreciate you, Ms. Sandy, and your years of service to the district and to our school. And we congratulate you on your retirement.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Again, we appreciate all of our retirees and all of your service. And we hope that many of you consider retiring, enjoying retirement, and keeping us in your mind for possible substitute. Because we don't want to miss your beautiful faces.
Right, so we have student and employee recognition. So they get to come back up.
Okay, so I am back up to recognize our Students of the Month and our Employee of the Month. And we'll start with our Students of the Month. And our youngest student of the month is from pre-K, Ms. Ensley Connor. And Ensley's teacher, Ms. Richards, has this to share. She says that over the course of this year, Ensley has shown tremendous growth, both academically as well as socially, socially and emotionally. Ensley is now confident in who she is and has learned to use that confidence to achieve her goals and master skills in our pre-K classroom. Ensley is a ray of sunshine, and I can't wait to be, hear about her rocking it out in kindergarten. Congratulations. And our Kindergarten Student of the Month is Crystal Taylor. And I don't see Crystal with us tonight. We will go on to our next Student of the Month, first grade Danielle Garrett. Our second grade Student of the Month is Mavis Freeland. Our third grade Student of the Month is Josiah Richards. And Josiah's teachers have this to say about him and this wonderful achievement. Josiah entered, the Josiah that entered third grade is definitely not the Josiah that you see before you today. Josiah has always had outstanding behavior and positive attitude towards learning and his peers. He has grown and matured so much during this school year. He has now turned into the most confident kid that I knew he was. It is an honor to announce him as our Student of the Month and even more of an honor and privilege to have been his teacher. Congratulations. Our fourth grade Student of the Month is Zoe Haver. And our fifth grade Student of the Month is Mariah Spivey. And Mariah's teacher have this to share about her. Mariah is always very polite and respectful, and I can't stress that enough. Nowadays, it's often very rare that you see students with just manners day in and day out. And she is one that from the time she gets to campus, she's going to say, "Good morning, Ms. Hurd, good morning, Ms. Jones." She'll even come over to give us a hug each and every day, and she's consistent. But she's so very respectful, well-mannered, and such an amazing student and a positive role model, not just for our fifth grade students, but our school. And definitely one that we treasure and wish well as she transitions to middle school. And now, our Employee of the Month is Ms. Nicole Bajoka in our Exceptional Education Department. And as Ms. Bajoka makes her way to the floor, I will share this about Ms. Bajoka. Ms. Bajoka came to us after the school year had already started in October. And when I say she hit the ground running, she hit the ground running. She has been such an amazing asset to our school and our staff and definitely our Special Education Department. She serves as a role model, not just for her students in the classroom, but throughout our school. She always works hard to advance her students to higher, higher levels of academic achievement. Demonstrates a high commitment towards student achievement. Is caring, thoughtful, person who extends herself to help others and just make a positive difference. She's supportive and always very understanding to her parents, students, and colleagues. And we thank you so much, Bajoka, Ms. Bajoka, for all that you've done for our students and our school. Thank you.
All right, we will start out with our Employees of the Month. We have two of them this month. We will start with Ms. Kimberly Walker. Ms. Walker is, she's truly an amazing teacher. If you've ever spent any time in her classroom, it just, it never ceases to blow my mind. She just does such an amazing job for our kids, all of them, holds them to a high standard, brings so much to our school district. She's also over National Honor Society, also over dress code for next year, so working on that. But Ms. Walker...
Here you hear you, everyone.
But Ms. Walker, we really, really appreciate you, you know, I can't say that enough. Thank you. Our next Employee of the Month is Ms. Holland. Ms. Holland is, she teaches senior English. She's also over all things senior, which at a high school is a full-time job in itself. From a senior trip to graduation, it's just one thing after another. And she's, it's just, you know, and to us as educators, it's, it's the job, but you're dealing with, you know, someone's baby, and that's their big moment. And so that brings a lot of stress, and it takes someone with a lot of maturity and elegance to handle that in the right way. And we actually met her a few years ago at, of all places, America's Georgia. She's from Uphala. And we went down there for a teacher fair, and she, she found us. And I was like, "Why would you come to America's looking for Chattahoochee County?" But, you know, the Lord had it planned out, so we're just thankful, we happy. Thank you, Ms. Holland. Okay, now on to our Students of the Month. And our sixth grade Students of the Month is Alanis DeJesus. Alanis was nominated by her ELA teacher. Her teacher writes that not only is Alanis a kind of positive force in the classroom, but she is also a fabulous writer. "We are happy to call you a Chatco Panther. Keep up the hard work. Congratulations." Seventh grade is Mackenzie Vix. Mackenzie was nominated by multiple teachers. They say she is a joy to teach. She works hard in the classroom and always practices at home to perfect her skills. Her band teacher says she is a vital piece of the middle school band. We are proud of you, Mackenzie. Eighth grade is Russell Kemp. Ninth grade is Christopher Faircloth. Tenth grade is Nathaniel Montoya. I don't believe he's here, I believe he's working tonight. Eleventh grade is Michelle Bommer. Michelle is a wonderful student athlete. Michelle is a participant in the foreign exchange program. She has adjusted well to her education in America, jumped right in, socializing and involving herself in athletics. Michelle is representing us this weekend as a state qualifier for track and field. Which, I got to tell y'all, you know, I'm an old coach, so she is a stud. I mean, you put her on the track, turn her loose, and she can go and just run and run and run and run. We, she led our cross-country team earlier in the year to a second place finish in the state and first place finish amongst all public schools. So she is, she's an amazing athlete and an amazing student and just a joy to be around. Breaks my heart that she's not going to be here next year. I keep, I was asking her, "What can we do? Can we..." And she said, "I don't think you know how this works." I was like, "What if you just stay through cross-country?" She's like, "No, no, that's not how it works." Anyway, Michelle, we're glad to have you and we're proud of you. And our, our Senior Student of the Month, I believe he is out sick, is Mr. Thomas Putnam. Okay, well, I'll tell you what, I will read it. I'm gonna break protocol, but I'm gonna do it for Thomas, okay? Tom stands out as a one heartbeat student in daily interactions with staff and students. Tom was involved in dual enrollment academic courses, welding, as well as multiple athletic activities. He is a fantastic soccer player. Thomas has post-secondary plans of entering the Citadel in South Carolina, and we know that he will do well. Good luck in your future endeavors, and I hope you feel better.
Congratulations to all of our students on your recognition. We're so proud of you for representing Chattahoochee and for our Employees of the Month and all that you do to make us better every day.
All right, so next up we have our action items, but before we do that, we will take a quick break for a few minutes, so please feel free to come up and take pictures. And if you can stay, that would be great, but we do understand if you have to leave, so have a good night. Thank you all. So the first item in our action agenda is personnel.
I'll make the most.
Quick on that. All right, second, Teresa and all that approve the recommended personnel items? All right, next, Student Services vendors? I've gotta read this, I'm sorry. And this is just where renewing?
These, just for your clarification, the Student Service vendors, these are for specialty items like, you see that we have a contract deaf, hard of hearing teacher through a company. We have contract occupational therapy or contract physical therapy. So this is just keeping you aware of who those contracts are with and what those companies contractual rates are. It's for anything in Student Services, for any student who is eligible or qualifies, whether that be a 504 student, a student who has a specialized medical plan, or an IP.
You need an approval on this.
Yeah. Because it could go over our cost.
All right, any questions? All right, is there a motion to approve the Student Services?
I'll approve it.
Make the motion, all right. Shirley?
How long does the contract end?
We do a contract every year. And I will say, in the past, it has been student-specific. So you've maybe seen from our Special Ed Department, one student's IP dictates such and such. And so the financial obligation has been very low. But as our population and needs have changed, I think it's proactive of us to go ahead and keep you aware of those costs because our Special Ed and 504 numbers have grown and those services and those needs have increased.
We still have the motion on the table, so is there a second? Shanae and all that approve? All right, now our renewals. Give me just a second, please.
And just again, for your clarification, this is our vendor renewals that we do annually. These are our contracts every year with the vendors that we do business with. Many of them are not over the financial threshold, but for best practices, I'd like for you to be able to approve their renewal that we use those companies.
Sorry, I need just a second. Is that still the counties? You did. I just, I saw that. I'm sorry, I was looking at this last. Okay, this is separate, so this is not a problem. No.
Yeah.
So do we need to vote on three different ones? I'm sorry?
You'll see that we have one of them taken out because of, it's a local contractor who has relations with a board member. So we do want to make sure that we take that one separately.
Okay, so just two?
The, we'll be voting on one with the annual cost because it exceeds our threshold. And that'll be our first one, and then we'll vote on just our second renewal one. And then we'll do it.
Yeah, okay, so there's three votes. Sorry. Okay. So the first one, we will do the annual cost. All right, is there a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Shanae, is there a second?
I'll second.
Shirley and all that approve? Okay. Then we will do the vendor renewals. And this is excluding one, so this is all of the rest of them. All right, do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Teresa? Shanae and all that approve? Everyone, okay. And then the final one is the vendor renewal for the individual.
The final ones are electrical company renewal?
Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Shanae? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Teresa and all that approve? That's everyone, and I have to recuse myself. Okay, so that's all vendor renewals. All right, next we have salary sheets, rates, pricing, supplements. Was there anything we needed to talk about on this one?
Do y'all have any questions? This is the information that we've been discussing since our March work session and planning session. But I do want to make sure before we move forward with anything in the budget that we have done a approval of salary scales and answered any questions that you may have for that. Are there any questions?
I don't have any.
Y'all don't have any?
And I will say, I know Aaron is not with us this evening, but he has also indicated that he did not have any questions either with the information presented.
All right, so do we need to do two on these as well? Because we have salary schedules and then rates. Okay. So the first one is for the salary schedule we just discussed. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Shanae, is there a second? Shirley and all that approve? That passes. And then the next one is the 24 daycare rates.
Daycare rates did stay the same.
They stayed the same.
Yep.
So for the daycare rates, is there a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Teresa? Is there a second? I'll second. Oh, you got it? Shirley will take it and all that approve? That passes. And then we have approved the tentative budget.
Yes, that is all of our information that we've had our public hearings on, expenses, estimated expenses and revenue with our estimated fund balance and carryover.
All right, so do we have a motion to approve the tentative budget?
I'll make the motion.
Look at her smile when she did that. Teresa, second and all that approve? Shanae was excited.
And as a reminder, now that you've approved that, we will have it published on the website as well. We will not have a formal vote to accept it until our June meeting. And even though we've had our public hearings, this gives our community time to also see it and ask additional questions if there are any.
Sounds good.
We do not adopt the millage rate until August, based on the way that the county does their taxes and when that is released for us. We don't expect anything significant with that as well.
It's good news.
Very good news.
All right. And we did not have any public participation?
None.
Anyone sign up? All right. And we do not have an executive. So Shirley, you're up. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Shirley, and do we have a second?
I'll second.
Teresa and all that approve? All right, thank you all and have a good night.
Thank you.